Moving on, there are no appointments by the mayor this week. And presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, the City Administrator's Monthly Finance Report. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item, and the happiest item, I guess, for once, is the June, we have the June sales tax information. Bear in mind that the information we're getting on sales tax, there's a lag, so this would represent economic activity that occurred thirty to up to ninety days ago. But, on the good side, we are now just about exactly on our projection for what we wanted to be for this year, or we thought we would be for this year, not what we wanted to be, but what we thought we would be. You can see we're .004 percent below projections, which is about as close as you can hope to be. Now, that is, of course, the revised projections, not what we had originally hoped for. So, we hope that that number is trending upward, and that we will continue to receive additional sales tax. And that will improve the situation. Again, if you go to the next slide, because it's so close, I did kind of zoom in, and you can see we're really right on our projection. Moving on to the fund balance, fund balance remains unchanged. If you saw the report from last, you'd see that the number has changed, and that was really just a technical change that we made that made a slight difference, but nothing has changed in the fund balance, and so it remains the same, and still, what we consider to be at a healthy fund balance. And then I did want to spend a little bit on lodging tax. It's a more complex chart this time than what you've seen in the past. The dark line, should be blue, but it's kind of a grayish color, that is the current 2013, and you can see that it's trending, lodging tax is trending above where we have seen in the past. That is a very good thing. It's interesting to see, the reason I put the 2011, 2012, we only have partial data on this, when you look at the total tax, I didn't include the part before when our tax changed, but you can see that from June, well, say, July through December, the lodging tax for the last two years has been nearly identical, following the same trend. So, we can assume that it will probably follow that same trend. It's also interesting, you can see very clearly from that, the biggest months for lodging tax collections, which would also indicate the biggest months for people staying in our hotels, is September and October, and then it falls off substantially in November and December. But August is also, which is what we're coming into, apparently a slow month, I guess, people don't see the joy of August in mid-Missouri. The council had asked that we do an additional report, which is showing where the departments are against the budget. We were not able to get that prepared for this report, but we will have that next month.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Are there any questions for Mr. Nicholas? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. That's item eleven, announcements by mayor, oh, excuse me, I jumped over one. Item ten, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, and we have an invited, or it's not an invited guest, but we have someone signed up to speak, or maybe you are invited, Gloria, I'm not sure. Why don't you come forward? Gloria Enlow has an update on JCTV, and I don't know if we have to ask you to do name and address, but just in case, would you mind?
Okay, well, I'm Gloria Enlow, I'm from JCTV, on the campus of Lincoln University, 709 East Dunklin Street.
Thank you.
And I think I was invited by Carrie, so we'll call us invited guests.
There you go.
Well, I want to update you about our fundraiser. It's coming up this Thursday, it's July eighteenth. We have the Mid-Missouri Hog Wild Talent Show. We're going to be having a whole hog roast and barbecue dinner at the McClung Park Pavilion, and we're also going to have a talent show where we have people from the Mid-Missouri area compete. We have a couple singers, a band, and a cheer group that's going to perform, and we'll have a panel of judges decide who the winner is with some help from the audience reaction. But the big draw is going to be, of course, the dinner, which is going to be delicious from Michael's unforgettable barbecue. What we are doing besides planning for our fundraiser is working on increasing some of our programming. We've joined something called pegmedia.org, it's a free website, and basically it's peg channels from across the country have banded together, and they're uploading programming that would be of national or regional interest. So you can share programming on there, and also use what they have, and we're going to talk about uploading some of the stuff we do, the bigger productions, the Christmas parade, Capitol caroling, and just some things we think would be of national interest. One of our volunteers, Jeff Bassinson, does a show with us called Base Notes, and he also does the Jazz Fest, he provides us copies of that that we run on the channel, but he's been uploading that onto this website, and he's been getting downloads from California, and he's got, I think, twenty-two states now where that program is being aired. So it gives people from across the country the ability to see what's happening in Jefferson City. And we are really focusing on educational programming right now, we really want to bring that up, and right now, we have about thirty percent of our playback schedule is dedicated to educational programming. We have two groups of volunteers that are in training right now, we have four community volunteers that are in one group, they're training to be able to produce a dance show that they're wanting to do at JCTV, and then we have another group of two volunteers, and they're actually Lincoln University students and employees, and they are learning how to do digital editing, because they have some video that they want to work on to actually make a show out of, and provide it for the channel. And we're really excited, because we have two students who have been volunteers at JCTV for a couple of years now, and they graduated, and they are enrolling in Lincoln University in the fall, and they'll be going in the journalism program, so we will have even more access to them, and they'll be able to spend even more time with us. We would like to work with the city to establish some more government programming. Like I said, we have about thirty percent of our programming is dedicated to educational shows, but we'd like to do some more government shows. Right now, we do city council, and we do planning and zoning, but we'd like to maybe get some stuff firmly on the schedule, whether it's awards ceremonies that take place here, additional committee meetings, or candidate forums. We usually do do the candidate forums, but I'd like to get them on a calendar, so make sure that we can be available for those. And we are looking forward to seeing Dr. Rome, Monday, at one o'clock, he's going to be a guest on W.T. Edmondson's show, and so we'll have a chance to introduce him to the facility.
Great. Would you, just in case someone that's watching maybe wanted to write those dates down for your fundraiser, would you repeat those dates again, please?
Sure. That's Thursday, July eighteenth. It's going to be from six o'clock to nine o'clock at the McClung Park Pavilion. Tickets are twenty dollars for adults, and twelve dollars for kids, and you can get them in advance, or you can pay at the door.
And where can you get them?
They can email jctvaccess@gmail.com, or call us at (681) 5443.
Okay, why don't you repeat that one more time?
All right. The email address is jctvaccess@gmail.com, and the phone number to reach us is (681) 5443.
Thank you. Any questions for Gloria? Carrie?
Thank you. In listening to all the programming and all that's coming up on JCTV, is there a place the public can go, is there a website or Facebook page that shows, like you mentioned, one o'clock Kevin Rome will be on on a certain day, and all these new programming tips that you gave us tonight that are going to be shown, how can the public tap into that?
We do have a website, it's jctvaccess.com, and our schedule's on there, both our production schedule and our playback schedule, so people can not only see when stuff is airing, but when we're going to be doing stuff. And then we also have a Facebook page, and it's just JCTV, and we update that pretty regularly.
Sure.
And one last thing, and I don't know if Bill Betts might be the one to know this, is there a link to the JCTV access if you go to jeffcitymo.org? Can they link into that? And I guess if not, maybe we could add that.
I think we do that, yeah.
There is? Great, there is one there, so they can even go to jeffcitymo.org. Thank you, Gloria, great information.
Thanks, Carrie.
And I had a question, it went completely out of my head, so does anyone else have one while I'm trying to think of it? Mr. Graham?
Well, first of all, thank you for your presentation to the council. I know you had mentioned earlier about some of the different events that JCTV is covering, for example, the city council meeting, and Public Works and Planning, you mentioned?
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
Mm-hmm.
And I know, as relates to a part of being transparent, is there any way possible that maybe the finance committee could be televised, so that the city of Jefferson can see what's exactly taking place, just trying to be more transparent?
I think we could do that. One issue might be where the finance committee meets, because I don't believe they meet in here, and I think they might have something else that's happening in here during that same time.
Okay.
But we can look and definitely see if we can get that in here. If we can get in here, it'll be very easy. If not, we could maybe do a one-camera shoot, and just put that on the air as well.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions for Gloria? You know, I can't remember my questions, so I guess I'm not sure if it's similarity or just exactly what it is, but anyway, I'll have to ask you at another time when it happens to occur to me again.
You can email or call us, or ask me Thursday night.
Okay, well, thank you very much for being here, we appreciate the good update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're at number eleven, announcements by mayor, council, and staff, and I think there are a couple of council people who have an announcement. Carrie?
Thank you. The Jefferson City Kiwanis Club asked that I announce their black-and-white luau party, which is July twenty-seventh. It's a fundraiser that will benefit four local charities, the Rape and Abuse Crisis Service, American Red Cross, Jefferson City Daycare, and the annual Jeff City Police Department Buddy Pack Program. So definitely wanted to make sure, since our police department is involved in that, that we announce that. If you're interested, it's fifty dollars per ticket, and you can call Holly at (573) 680-1712. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Bray?
Yes, Councilman Henry and I are going to host a community meeting for the Fifth Ward. It's coming up this Saturday at nine o'clock in the morning until eleven o'clock, and we ask folks in the Fifth Ward, and it's open to the public too, community-wide. We will be discussing projects and issues of interest to the Fifth Ward and to the community. So we ask folks to come and attend, and bring your ideas and comments, and do not bring your checkbooks, this is not a fundraiser. It's, we're going to exchange information and ideas that morning. That's coming up this Saturday, nine o'clock to eleven o'clock, and it's at McClung Park. Hope to see you there.
Rain or shine?
Rain or shine, it's indoors.
Indoors, okay, very good. Any other announcements or questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda, and the only item on there is the minutes of the city council meetings for June twenty-seventh, and did I miss one? I, yes, I did, I jumped it again, sorry about that. Number twelve, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. All individuals be limited to five minutes without exception. All presentations shall be made from the podium unless other accommodation is requested and granted, and the only person who has signed up is Chris Sheperley regarding Bill twenty thirteen dash thirty-six. Mr. Sheperley?
Hi, Chris Sheperley, twenty-two oh three, Oakview Drive. I'd just like to thank Bob, and council, and staff. I said, I'm Chris Sheperley, I'm president of All Seasons Landscaping and Construction Incorporated. I'm a Jefferson City resident, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about the compost site facility. My business has operated the Jefferson City compost site for the last three years. We've processed large volumes of yard waste, and we've produced a high-quality compost. We receive over a hundred residents per day on average, and we've had numerous compliments on how clean our site is kept. We have over six thousand square feet of paved area that we put in at our facility. We did this to try to keep our site clean and orderly, so that it was very nice for the citizens of Jefferson City. In addition to that, we have obtained a DNR permit, we have a storm water prevention plan, that includes extension, extensive erosion control measures, and we do periodic water quality testing. At this time, I'd like to talk about the RFP that you put forward, and I'd like to point out a few items. Part five, the proposal requirements. Part A, system description, basically required identification to, for city residents, volume reports. Part B, site consideration, location and size of the site. Item number two, a privately-owned property, appropriately-zoned property within the city corporate limits, and that zoning is M2. Site must have easy access, must have a paved entrance and exit, and the contractor must clearly identify the hours of operation. Item C, operation of the drop-off site. Under number two, it says at a minimum, the city wishes to continue the same level of service, and clearly states the summer hours, the winter hours, and also wants the operator to list the holidays that would be, when they would be closed. Item D, advertising. Item E, waste guarantee. Item F, marketing compost. Item G, financial, financing and financial projections. And then that brings us to item H, the evaluation process. But I'd like to go back, these were all proposal requirements. So, item H, after determining that a proposal satisfies the mandatory requirements stated in the request for proposal, a comparative assessment of the related benefits and deficiencies of the proposal in relationship to a published evaluation criteria shall be made, and it goes on. But I'll repeat, after determining that a proposal satisfies the mandatory requirements stated in the request for proposal. The proposal that we submitted met all the mandatory requirements. The other proposal did not. It was evaluated by the committee and presented to the Public Works and Planning Committee to be the best proposal. The committee voted unanimously to send it to the full council. That is where we are today. I take pride in my business and my property, and treating others with respect. My employees treat others with respect, and they treat all who come to the Jefferson City compost site with respect. We provide a great service to the city, and we would like to continue to provide that great service. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Sheperley?
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, now, we will move on to item thirteen, the consent agenda. Minutes of city council meeting, July twenty-seventh and July first, two thousand and thirteen. Do I need a motion to approve? We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? It is unanimous, the motion passes. There are no bids over fifty thousand, so we'll move on to fifteen bills introduced. First bill, twenty thirteen thirty-eight, please read it.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, by appropriating additional funds within the wastewater fund.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This clerk indicated this is supplemental to the wastewater fund budget, it's fifty thousand dollars supplemental for chemicals. All commodity funds must run through the council for them to be appropriated if they are to exceed the current budget. Basically, as I understand it, we're using a lot more chemicals this year than we have in the past, trying to keep the odors down about our various pump stations and system.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Marash? Mr. Bray?
Matt, do I understand right, this comes out of fund balance, the fifty thousand?
This comes out of the wastewater fund balance. So that the wastewater is a separate utility fund, they collect rates, and are kept in a separate fund than the general fund.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Marash? Okay, thank you, twenty thirteen thirty-nine.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, regarding the connection fee paid by entities connecting to the sanitary sewer.
Mr. Marash?
Again, thank you. Another wastewater topic, the proposal is to increase the sewer tap fee from its current three hundred dollars to four hundred dollars. This was discussed at a previous Public Works and Planning Committee meeting, and recommended to the council for approval. Just real quick, a connection fee is really a way for new customers to buy into an existing system. The ratepayers previously had built a system that could expand to allow growth outside of the current system. New connections would pay this connection fee. Simple math really indicates that we have an eleven million gallons-per-day plant, approximately thirty thousand households could connect to that, and that would put the connection fee around thousand dollars, if done in simple math terms. We felt like the incremental increase of a hundred dollars would be palatable to the community and not stifle development. We checked rates in other neighboring communities, Ashland is over fifteen hundred dollars for a connection fee, Cape Girardeau, seven fifty, Columbia, eight hundred, Old Summit's, six hundred. So I think we're well within line at the four hundred dollars mark, and we'd recommend approval of this.
Okay, and it, the, as the clerk read that she used the term entity, does that mean both commercial and residential? Anyone who taps in will pay the same fee?
I believe that's true.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Well, I believe it's also, there's a water service.
Connection charge as well?
Yeah, it's also depending on your water service, too.
If you have a multi-family.
This is a residential fee, is what I'm discussing.
This is a residential fee only? Okay, so like a multi-family unit, say a ten-unit condominium, for instance, would that be ten times four hundred, or is there one four hundred dollar charge? I guess it depended if they're ten meters or not.
Yeah, any specifics like that, I'm still new to this area, so I'd have to get back to you on this.
You might be able to answer that question at the next meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bray?
Matt, that's only new construction, right?
Yeah, it'd be a new construction, new tap to the sewer.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further questions? Then we'll move on to twenty thirteen forty.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Hutchins Telecom LLC to construct the Route B Tanner Bridge Sewer Extension.
Mr. Marash?
Yeah, another wastewater topic, we have recently bid a project for our new Route B sanitary sewer, it's also, a pump station is with that project, the cost of this project's one million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, or, excuse me, plus four hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand in addition. The, this is kind of part of an annexation area to the south, it's off of Christie Drive and Route B, and Highway one seventy-nine area, and serves the Rickman Center, that area, if you're familiar with it. City staff would recommend approval, it's been a project in the works for some time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Marash? Mr. Graham?
Matt, I must ask this question, were they the lowest bidder?
They were, and I think there were five bidders on this project.
Total of five bidders?
I think there were five bidders, this was the lowest.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any further questions? Then we'll move on to twenty thirteen forty-one.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Ameren Missouri Company to provide electrical service to the Route B Tanner Bridge Sewer Extension.
Mr. Marash?
Again, yeah, this is a companion bill to the previous one, basically Amer needs to extend electricity to the site to run the pump station, and this would be the cost of that. It's not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Okay, any questions? All right, twenty thirteen forty-two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Evers &amp; Company CPAs LLC for audit services.
Mr. Betts?
Thank you, your honor. As the clerk said, this is for our audit services, it's a three-year contract, staff is proposing that it's with Evers &amp; Company. We had six proposals for this contract, the staff members that evaluated, we're planning and protective services director Janice McMillan, fire chief Jason Turner, chief accountant Sheila Perry, and myself. We selected Evers &amp; Company, their proposal included the first year at thirty-eight thousand, the second year at thirty-nine thousand two hundred, and the third year at forty thousand four hundred, for a three-year total of one hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred. Evers was not the lowest bidder, but we did feel that they were the best bidder for this particular contract. They were the least expensive on an hourly rate, Evers did offer to provide more hours of service than the other vendors did, and we felt that their experience was better, or at least on par, with any of the other folks that made an offer. I'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Betts? Thank you, sir. Twenty thirteen forty-three.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for assistance with operating expenses for the air traffic control tower at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of November one, two thousand and twelve, through October thirty-one, two thousand and thirteen.
Once again, Mr. Marash?
Thank you. The, as the clerk indicated, this is a grant agreement, the cost is not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars, or the amount we could receive, and helps defray the cost of the city's tower at the airport.
And this is essentially an annual agreement?
Correct, and I think it usually comes later than it did this year, but it's always a little behind, but I think we're a little ahead of a little behind this time.
Seems like it. Are there any questions for Mr. Marash? Thank you. We'll move on to item sixteen, bills pending. We've already taken up twenty thirteen thirty-four and twenty thirteen thirty-five. The clerk will read twenty thirteen thirty-six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with All Seasons Landscaping and Construction Incorporated for the operation of a public compost site.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make a quick comment here, this is an issue that came to the Public Works and Planning Committee and was moved forward to the council. Since that time, there has been a lot of one-on-one discussion among council members. I think there has been some concerns about the process, if you will, also, and when I say process, the process for evaluation and so forth, and so I would hope that some of our discussion and debate that we've had one-on-one among ourselves, that you might be willing to share some of that with the public tonight, as we debate this issue and decide whether or not we're going to award this contract. So, is there debate or comment from any member of the council? Mr. Bray?
May I ask a question of staff?
Yes, sir.
Janice, the, Chris Sheperley said in his presentation a little ago, the minimum required questions need to be addressed? I think, something to that effect?
Yes, his, the proposal submitted by All Seasons did meet the minimum requirement, if that's what you're asking.
Were there any other bids that also met the minimum?
There were two proposals, one from All Seasons, and one from Bray Brothers, and the contention is that the proposal from Bray Brothers did not meet the minimum requirements. Our purchasing director did not make that suggestion that it didn't meet the minimum requirements, but I would like to point out that the differences between the proposals are that All Seasons controls their site, and it's properly zoned, and that the hours of operation specifically were requested to be included in the proposal, that they be at least what is offered today.
All right, thank you.
And the Bray Brothers' proposal did not include those same hours and days of operation.
Okay, Mr. Bray?
I'd be more comfortable in the interview.
I'd be more comfortable in entering in a longer-term contract, knowing that the process has been more streamlined, the questions being asked in the proposal. The staff did a great job, I thought, but I'd like to see it narrow down to one option, not three. And I just feel like there was some confusion, and I just like to see staff and the committee revisit.
Okay. Any, any further comment or questions? Mr. Mahalvi?
I think my comment last time was that, consistent with a bid being placed and met, meeting the qualifications, it is what it is when it's, when it's cast. So, I, I think the only option is we either accept the bid we have before us that has met the requirements or reject all bids and go to a different route, would be my, my conclusion from that. However, I was a little bit concerned at the increase in the budget that it would take to operate under the option two given. So, I would have liked to have more input into trying to maintain a flat level of cost, but maybe add a reduced service because of our budget situation. So, I don't know that all those situations were weighed. I know we had a recommendation from staff, which I respect greatly, but I don't, I don't care for changing location every so often because that adds confusion to the, to the citizens who use it. I use the site. I've used the previous site, and I've been quite pleased with the service the city puts forth, but I, I would like to see it flat in terms of budget, whether that meant reduction in services or hours of operation. But having said that, I, I feel like the bid process was fair. The bid process is what it is. When the bids are closed, they're closed, and that we can't reopen things and look backwards. The, it, it, just, to me, that that would be unfair. So, I would, I'm not going to, my, my vote is to either accept the bid or to, to do something other than reject all bids or, or go forward with something else.
Okay. Any other? Mr. Schulte?
Couple of questions for staff. Mrs. McMillan, you had mentioned that, I believe you mentioned that Brake Brothers' proposal did not necessarily meet the requirements of the RFP. I guess my question is, is why did staff not just reject their proposal from the beginning, but chose to call them and clarify the bid and then go ahead and evaluate their proposal?
I guess I relied on the opinion of our purchasing director, and if she had said that the proposal didn't meet the minimum requirements, then we could have rejected that proposal outright. But given that they submitted a proposal, and they submitted cost proposals for all of the options that we requested, even though they didn't propose winter hours, it wasn't clear that that was an oversight on their part, but we just went ahead and, and included them in the evaluation, given those conditions.
Do you feel like that once you opened the door to Brake Brothers to clarify their bid, that at that point, you chose for their bid then at that point to be responsive based upon their clarification? And at that point, it does meet specification with clarification, or it still does not meet what's requested in the RFP?
Well, I guess to me, the response wasn't, wasn't really all that clear, and I assumed that they could, could, could go either way, depending on, on, on whatever. But they did, did not follow up with a response on the winter hours, which I guess hindsight's twenty-twenty. You know, if, if we were going to allow them to do that, we maybe, we should have requested they follow up with something in writing to confirm that they were, were in fact going to include winter hours. Or, again, maybe we shouldn't have called them to try to figure it out, so.
Mr. Helfer? Let me follow up real quick. Do, do you feel that the, and I know you want to respond to Councilman Schulte, so let me go ahead and let you do that, and then I'll follow up. Go ahead.
Okay. Sure. I'd go a step further maybe than, than Janice. There is a part of the proposal that says you can waive any minor deficiencies if it's to the advantage of the city, and I think the, the group decided it was better to have two in the game than one. And, you know, maybe I'm just faulty in my memory, but my recollection of that meeting was that we were looking for the winter hours and called them to determine if the winter hours were there somewhere. Now, maybe that was just me and not somebody else. So, I, I think the group brought both of them along because we felt it was more advantageous to have two people bidding. That was, that's where my thought process was on, on that issue.